All right, good evening, everyone. I will call our work session to order. We have two items, Organized Collection and we have the Richfield Tourism Board as well. And I'm assuming they're each an hour. Is it each an hour for?
Yep. So first off, we have Sustainability Specialist Lindholm, and she'll provide an update on the Organized Collection transition. We should wrap that up about 5:45. And then we'll have an hour for the discussion of the Richfield Tourism and Promotion Board Agreement Recommendation. And we should try and wrap that up by about 6:45. So we have time to transition to the council meeting because we've had some AV issues, and I want to give some time for that.
And then, just quick, I forgot to mention for the recording, the date is September 14th, and our work session is, I wanted to put that in there as well. Okay. I'll pass it back to staff.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, and City Manager Rodriguez. Tonight, I will be talking about Organized Collection and giving an update on where we're at in the process, and just kind of recapping as we continue to move forward and get closer and closer to the implementation week, so to speak. So tonight, I'll discuss a project recap, what's happening right now, our communication with residents, and next steps. I'm going to go pretty quickly through some of it, as it's mostly a recap. But please feel free to ask me questions at any time throughout the presentation, or at the end, it's totally fine, or if you need me to clarify something. So, just to quickly go over, obviously, you are all familiar how long this project has been going on, and how it ties into multiple goals that the city has had and the city council has put forward, including solid waste goals, our green subsidies efforts, our climate action plan that was approved last year, our equity and inclusion work, I mean, the list goes on. So, really excited to keep working on this. The contract was officially approved on June 8th. You all know that, as it was approved by the city council. And since that point, we have been working really with the haulers on, you know, the implementation that will be happening in October. So, it's been a very quick process, and we've put in a lot of work to make sure that we are covering all of the bases and everything, including our communication with residents and revising city code, which obviously needed to come into compliance with the new program and needed to be updated in general. So, the biggest and most important thing that we've been working on is our engagement with residents. As we know, this is a project that is, you know, going to change, you know, daily habits and routines for about 10,000 households in the city, and that's a pretty big project. It's massive. So, we really want to make sure that we are communicating everything about the implementation, and why we're doing this, and all of those details to residents, and we've done that in so many ways. Since the approval of the contract, we've sent out two citywide mailings, and there will be a third one that I can talk more about later, but it will be in mailboxes before the end of the month, so in advance of the implementation, and it talks about the transition itself. So, I'll talk more about that later. Of course, we sent out citywide mailings before the contract was approved as well, so this is not the total number. As you know, we have the dedicated webpage with frequently asked questions, that's updated, and have posted numerous online articles and updates written by our communications staff as well. So, Facebook, the city website, the pop-up, all those kinds of things. Like I said, the media posts with the comments, you know, we've had a lot of good interaction with residents there, been able to answer a lot of questions there. Some current articles and community notes, which are those smaller updates that aren't full articles, we've put in over four since the approval of the program, so that's again just another way to get those details out, especially to residents who are not, you know, choose not to get their information online, or aren't on Facebook, or things like that. And then, actual events. We had one in-person event, which was hosted by Councilmember Wayland, which I attended and kind of gave an overview of the program and talked about the transition, answered resident questions, and I think it went really well, and, yep, Councilmember Wayland does too. It was really nice to actually interact with residents, and that was the first and only, besides city council meetings, the first and only resident in-person event about organized collection, obviously, since everything has been virtual, except for some city council meetings. So it was really nice to be able to interact with the community. And then, calls and emails. Okay, so, just for context, I did ask IT to pull my phone records, so there's 900 calls, not entirely about organized collection, but mostly about organized collection, and I'm not exactly sure if this just includes, like, missed calls that didn't leave voicemails, so I think the number's a little lower. But, that being said, I have responded to every single voicemail I've received, which has been many hundreds, in addition to answering calls that just come in normally and things like that. So, and then, obviously, the emails there as well. It's hard to get an accurate count, just because of the sheer volume of them, but it's safe to say that residents are definitely reaching out, which is great. So, answering a lot of questions there and helping residents through issues that might come up, this also does include issues that residents are currently having in the open system. You know, I'm trying my best to kind of work with our haulers, even though Organized Collection hasn't officially started, and we're helping with missed pickups and things like that. So then, the themes of resident calls and emails, just quickly, I'll go into some specifics, but quickly, transition questions, of course, especially since that information has not come out in the mail yet. People are excited, are just wanting to be prepared, totally understandable, so questions about refunds, yard waste, cart swaps, if they need to call their hauler to set up an account, things like that, billing, and then pricing, signing up for organics, switching cart sizes, and then questions about organics in particular, and questions about the hauler zones, how they were made, why Republic has half of the city and others don't, et cetera. So, we've kind of gone over those. If you all have questions about any of those, I can definitely answer them as well. But then, specifically, some of the frequently asked questions. What is organics? Obviously, we're bringing a new program to the city, so that information is online, has been in the paper, and will be sent out in the services guide as well to residents, so they'll give a primer on that program. How will the transition go? When will carts be picked up? Again, that information is in the next mailing, and, you know, is available online as well. And then, the question about the organics pay structure, I tried to have the language be the exact language I'm getting from residents, which is kind of why these questions sound like this. But, yeah, so, trying to explain that pay structure of everyone pays for the program, even if you don't participate, which is how recycling works currently, all the information that we've talked about before as a group. And then, yeah, I got your letter in the mail, and I'm confused, what do I do? Which is very fair, you know, there's a lot of information, and we try not to overload residents, so it's natural that, you know, they'll just call to get questions answered. Most of the time, the answer is they don't need to do anything. So, you know, at this point, the deadline for a cart size request has passed, so even if they did want to change them, they'll have to wait a little bit, but besides that, residents don't need to call to set up accounts, they don't need to call to cancel accounts, they don't need to call to get a refund, they don't need to call, you know, they're haulers for any of that stuff. So, hopefully, pretty easy on their end. And then, again, what are the rates? Those are online, they are sent out, they will be sent out in the services guide, which is the booklet that we're sending out to all households about all the services, and I am more than happy to go over that on the phone, which sometimes is confusing, just because of the amount of numbers, but it's worked out. So then, the process with the haulers, we've had regular meetings with them, mostly every other week, sometimes more than that, just depending on what we need to talk about. I talk to either via phone or email a hauler, multiple haulers, every single day. And so that's to talk about weird things that have come up, that maybe we just need to interpret in the contract, or things that we didn't think of, or customer list information, you know, setting up service for new residents, because obviously, we still have new residents moving into town before organized collection starts. So, that's kind of, I talk to them very, very frequently. And then, we have also had a meeting with all haulers and their subcontracted vendors for the cart delivery and cart swap logistics. So, those are the companies that will be picking up the carts, delivering the new carts, sorting them. We're in discussions with both the hub and the Legion to use areas of their parking lots for this project, which is obviously very helpful for us, since, you know, 10,000 households could mean, you know, upwards of 30,000 carts in some cases, and that's a lot of carts to switch out over one month and really one week. So, it's helpful to have those community partners working with us to use that space, and it's helpful to all be on the same page for what that first full week of October's going to look like. So then, just to recap, the implementation plan, and this is some of those details that will be in the mailing that we're sending out to all residents. It will happen, the cart swap will happen on the day, the collection day indicated by the service maps. The most important thing to reiterate, both to you all, council members, and to residents, is that this is the service day according to the new map. It may or may not be your current service day. For most of the city, it will be your current service day. For about a quarter of the city, their service day is changing. I think we have talked about that before, but if not, I can explain. So anyway, it's important that they check the new map, and that map was mailed out in August, it will be mailed out in this upcoming mailing. It is available online. I'm more than happy to just tell people when they call. You know, any way that we can get out that it's your new service day, which may or may not be your current service day, that's the most important thing. Because if your service day changes and you put your carts out on the wrong day, it's going to take some time for us to then get back to go get the old carts and redeliver the new carts, because we're doing Monday on Monday. So if someone in Monday's zone forgets to put their carts out, you know, until Tuesday because their service day changed, then we're going to have to try and figure out, as we're doing the rest of the city, when to go back and get that person's specific carts, because they kind of, you know, missed the change or missed the memo. So, obviously, everyone will get carts and will figure it out, but it is best if residents know what their service day is going forward, and then, obviously, this will be the service day going forward for everything. So, it really is those few streets on either side of the existing division lines, and the biggest change is mostly the new Thursday. The right of 35W used to be Wednesday, and now it's Thursday. So, most of that is not a ton of residential, because it includes Richfield Lake and Woodlake, but, yeah. So, anyway, just reiterate that if residents are asking you questions about, you know, when is this going to happen? It happens on your new service day. So, if you live in Friday's zone, put out your current carts on Friday, all of your carts. It does not matter if it's a recycling week or not for you, put them all out, they will all get emptied, they will all get picked up, and you will get new carts delivered. This information's all in the letter, by the way, so don't worry. So that's kind of how that will work. And then, just to reiterate, these are the hauler zones, mostly straightforward, a few chunks of Waste Management has south of 66 for, you know, obvious reasons relating to market share, and then relating to the presence of Vets Park and Richfield Lake. So, engagement for implementate, yeah, Councilmember Chapman? Do you want to go back?
I was just curious, I've just noticed the data, that the days of the week are east to west.
Yeah, so each hauler is...
...the efficiencies that one hauler would have to come, you know, five days a week.
They want, no, this is actually, yeah, so the, I thought the same thing, because I was like, well, hey, Republic has half of the city, maybe they should just be here Monday, Tuesday, and half on Wednesday, whatever that means for them, and we'll only have one hauler in the city. But, it turns out that it's more efficient for the haulers to each have a portion of Richfield every day, to build in around the other cities that they haul, and things like that. So, yeah, it makes sense for them, it's fine, you know, we're still getting the efficiencies of a few trucks and them in specific areas, so. But, yeah, great question. So then, engagement for implementation, the next mailing that I've talked about, it has the details about the transition, it also has extra details like, you know, how the refund process is going to work, when it'll start, you know, things like signing up for organics, the whole cart size thing, if you want to change your cart size or change your trash frequency to every other week, when you can do that going forward, since that's, you know, on hold for now. And like I said, that should be in mailboxes, hopefully sometime next week, it depends on the printer and the post office at this point. And then, staff support for when organized collection starts. We have a new, a staff member at the community center who is fluent in Spanish as well, and so she will be helping me with any resident questions who, you know, might prefer to talk to someone fully in Spanish, and I'd prefer to have that be a fluent person rather than me trying to figure it out on the fly. So Ellen will be helping us with that, and that information is in the letter as well. So it has her phone number on the Spanish side. Again, the letter is in English on the front, Spanish on the back. We have a Green Core member starting next Monday, actually. Her name's Roxanne, she'll be with me at Public Works, kind of working a lot on residential organics education, also a few other projects not related to organized collection, like multi-unit recycling and things like that. So, she'll be available to kind of help as we get started with organics education and things like that. And then, obviously, Amy Merkel, you know, has been helping me throughout this whole process. And we've actually set up a general Richfield email for garbage and recycling questions. It is printed on the services guide, it's literally garbageandrecycling@richfieldmn.gov. So going forward, residents can reach out to me, they can also just reach out to that general email, which will be monitored by multiple staff members. So, so that's a little bit of what our staff support looks like. We've also had a lot of help from Public Works staff answering phone calls, too. And then, we'll obviously continue doing regular social media updates and some current updates as we go forward, especially throughout, you know, the rest of 2021, as it relates to cart size changes and yard waste and all that kind of stuff. So, we'll continue doing what we're doing with the communication. And then, obviously, since we have such a tight timeline between now and when the cart swap happens, you know, we're going to have everything go through the city posts, and you all have done a great job of sharing the posts from, you know, that we're publishing and/or using that language as talking points, and we'll be providing more talking points for you all, so you kind of just have that language to go to and aren't trying to figure it all out, or reach out to me, or anything like that. I mean, obviously, you still can, but hopefully, it makes it easier for you all, since you have a ton of topics and resident things going on. So, feel free to share any posts that Neil, Kate, or I put on the Facebook page as the official language, that's great. If you do have residents asking questions, and you know the answers, obviously, by all means, you don't need to direct them to me or anything, but if there is any confusion about anything, especially as we're kind of getting towards the finish line of this phase at least, definitely just direct residents to me. The biggest thing right now is that residents do not need to be calling their hauler. We've had a lot of confusion of residents contacting, especially the larger haulers, and not, their customer service reps not having the exact answers, because the program hasn't officially started yet. So, the biggest thing that I can just hopefully impart is just direct residents to me, if you don't know the answer, don't tell them to call a hauler at this point. And the letter says that as well. It, yeah, just tells them, after October 4th, great, call your hauler, you can still call the city, but until October 4th especially, it just, it helps so much, we've had a lot of confused people, and hopefully, this can, this can help. So, we do know there will be some bumps, obviously, it's 10,000 households, more than 30,000 carts with all the residents who have been signing up for organics, which is great. So, we're going to do our best, and we know that, you know, there's just a lot of one-off situations that we're going to have to figure out, but we will, and the haulers are more than happy to help us out with that. So, with that, any questions?
Thank you so much for the presentation. Any questions from council members? Councilmember Sepul.
I don't have a question, I just want to say thank you, because you've done a lot to make this process go smoothly.
Other questions from council? Councilmember Wayland.
I will definitely echo that, especially for the event. I think it was good to have a chance, some folks really just wanted to talk in person, and that was helpful. I wanted to circle back to what you were saying about kind of the communication and, like, talking points, and just to clarify, I think, whatever, this is not a request to do different things than what you described.
Sure.
But if, whenever the various pieces of that are ready, if that can just get emailed to us, I don't even know if it needs to be a separate, like, talking points, but just equipping us, I think honestly, half the time, the questions I've gotten are people who don't know, like, how to find the right page on the website, or just like, haven't seen. I think, in any organization, it's easy to over-assume how navigable your website is, and even with that, like, special alert, it's just, people are going to miss it. So any, just, if you can send us what exists and equip us to then answer the questions that are already out there, and save the more complicated ones to pass on to you, just want to affirm, that would be super helpful and hopefully can lighten the load for staff.
Yeah, no, I will, I will do that, for sure. I'll send out, I can send recap resources out, and we'll send a copy of that next mailing out to council members as well, since we've gotten to that point where it's done. So you all have that resource as well, and then, yeah, we'll send out all the links to the pages, and hopefully, that'll help. Yeah.
Other questions? Councilmember Hayford-Lee.
Yes, I just want to clarify on the previous slide you had about, you know, keeping things to a central channel, what are you asking us to do or not? Do you not want us to discuss it at all with residents? Do you, just like, anything that's kind of specific refer to staff, or what are you saying?
Okay. So, thanks, Councilmember Hayford-Lee. So basically, it's just that, as we continue to put out posts, and this particularly kind of also relates to, you know, if stuff comes up on the community page that staff are not monitoring too, this is just kind of so that we're aware of, okay, the city is posting Facebook posts, usually that'll be, I'm working with Neil on that, and we'll put it on the city's official page. And then, I think, this is just an established thing that I think many council members have done before, is that you, you all have, or at least some of you have your own council member pages, and you usually share posts from the city. That's just what we're, you know, asking, if that's a thing that you already do, please continue doing that, of just sharing the city's post. You, I don't want to, you know, speak out of turn or anything, but I think, you know, council members are very equipped to answer many of these questions, like Councilmember Wayland said, you know, just finding the resources and things like that. So, certainly would never say, don't engage with residents. It's just more like, if we're putting the Facebook post out, it'll save time on your part, and hopefully, some confusion on residents' parts, if you can just continue sharing the city's page, city's posts. That's it.
Okay.
City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you. I think, bottom line is, we would love your help, but we would like to make sure that the messages are really consistent, and so, we're providing the answers that we're giving to residents, and so, if you can answer from that, that's great. If it's complicated, Rachel is the resource.
Okay, great. I think the biggest thing that I feel uneasy about is somebody, which maybe it's better just to ignore it, but sometimes people just have, like, they don't think they should be paying for organics. Obviously, that's just a, in a policy opinion of theirs, and I don't think there's anything for staff to really say about it, it's a decision that was made. But they may choose to engage us and want us to answer for that, and I think, I'm assuming you don't have an issue with us engaging in that way. Okay. I did have a couple other, just, specific questions, or, this was a comment, and just totally to acknowledge, really, this is, so much of this is so good, I'm really excited about this program, and you've done just an incredible job with this. I did receive one piece of feedback on the last mailing that I thought was valid, and I just hope it's addressed in the next one, was they got the information, and it was like, well, if you want to make a cart size change, here's what you'd do, but it didn't include the pricing information, so they didn't really have knowledge what size they would want, or what that trade-off was. So just that, in our future mailings, hopefully, we're not assuming people have prior knowledge memorized or on hand, because honestly, even when I got it, I had to look up again what the prices were, even though I've been in a meeting, so.
Thank you for that feedback. It is something that I've gotten as well, and it was, it wasn't something that we had thought a ton about, oh, this is something, you know, we were, our thoughts was, okay, we put the pricing online, you know, we can direct residents to that, we'll put it in the newspaper, but we know that that doesn't cover all residents, and it would have been ideal to have it in the letter. The problem that we ran into was really the space constraint to keeping that to one page, so that we could keep the Spanish to one page as well, which, yeah, it was, it was something that we've learned from, and going forward, and like I said, in the services guide that is, will be sent out before the end of the month. So there's two mailings coming up, there's the services guide, and then there's the letter about the transition. The pricing for all services is in the services guide. So, it will be one of the next mailings that residents get. And then, yeah, going forward, if we do need to send out any other citywide mailings, we'll do our best to include all that information as well.
Okay. And then, if people did not get the cart deadline and they need to make a change, do they pay a cart change fee, or is there any...
No, no, so, once we get the transition, you know, the whole city transitioned, at least for like, the first stage, you know, everyone has their new, has new carts, you know, some of the sizes will be right, some will be not what they want because of requesting coming, or whatever the reason is, but everyone has carts from the right hauler, then we will reopen the size requests, or, you know, frequency requests, or whatever. And at that point, there'll be no deadline, and at that point, also, that kind of is when the one change per year for free clause in the contract kicks in. So, if residents make the, make a switch in 2021, it will be free, once the first switch will be free, and then, again, starting in 2022. So, the start date of when they can make those requests will be sent out in the mail, because we have to kind of take the month of October to get through the whole city period. But then, residents can make the switch. If they did make multiple switches in the same year, then there is a fee attached to anything after the first switch.
Okay, but it is per calendar year, not per anniversary?
It's per calendar year.
Okay, great.
Yep.
And then, my last one, just to confirm, the transition dates, the first date is October 4th, and then it's the Friday is the...
Yes, yeah, that's a good question, yeah. So I have gotten some residents who just think it is the first, and it's not, it starts Monday, October 4th. The first is a Friday, so if you have your collection day on a Friday, you will have October 1st with your old hauler.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Sepul.
Excuse me. So, some of the haulers have merged over the years, and they have carts from multiple different companies?
Mm-hmm.
So is it possible that you could get a variety of carts, or is they all going to be with the current one?
So, as far as I know, because we have talked about this with the haulers, as far as I know, they're, they are mostly going to be giving residents carts from the hauler as it exists now. So for instance, Republic carts would say Republic, they wouldn't say Randy's. But there might be an extra case or two where we didn't explicitly prohibit them from using other hauler carts, because in, in the goal to use what we have, you know, obviously, some carts are bad, their true best goals, they need to be removed, that kind of thing, but it doesn't make sense to get rid of all the carts if there is a use for them, so they might use them internally. I, as far as I know, the haulers will be delivering brand-new carts that have the specific company name, Republic, Aspen, or Waste Management. Probably not, you know, any of the companies that they've acquired, Randy's, Red's, Bird's, you know, anything else that you can think of, but it might happen, and if that's the case, we'll be explicit in the messaging about, you know, what's going on. But I don't think it's planned at this point.
Thank you.
Other questions from council members on the update? I don't think I have any questions either. Thank you so much, Rachel, for the presentation, and I know our residents really do appreciate the one-on-one response and interaction that you've given them, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, pass it over to City Manager Rodriguez to talk about our next item on the work session, which is Richfield Tourism and Promotion Board.
Thank you. While we get this presentation pulled up, I'd like to invite, we have Richfield Tourism and Promotion Board President Vasicki here tonight, and then also Executive Director Katie Epler. And then Attorney Techen has also been working with us on negotiations and research. Executive Director Epler will present during my presentation, and then President Vasicki will present afterwards, and all of us are available for questions. I'm having trouble advancing it. Sorry. Should I go up there? It's working for Rachel. Oh. She punked me and turned it off. There we go. So this is the history of the agreement with RTPB. It, our agreement dates from 1990. We, we started doing research on this in 2019, and we were disrupted by the pandemic. As you can see, it severely disrupted the lodging industry, and, well, hospitality industry, and also, the city had to prioritize our response to the pandemic. We recently started discussing it again, and we have tonight a presentation that will be a recommendation for an updated agreement, the basic elements of an agreement. The goal of our work session tonight is to get guidance from you on your, on our recommendation, and then we can bring back a draft agreement in the first quarter of 2021. The basic structure will not change. The city levies a 3% lodging tax. Those funds are then used to contract with RTPB, and then RTPB does promotion events and promotion activities, which we hope brings more people to Richfield. And for this portion, I'd like Director Epler just to give you an update on some of the good work that RTPB has been doing.
Hi, I'm Katie Epler. Thanks for having us.
There we go. I didn't have time to put together a lot of really detailed analysis or anything, so I was just going to kind of talk informally about some of our activities this year. The one thing that's quick and easy to get stats for is our email, our email list, and so you just can see, we had a social media company that we worked with when I came on board called Busyweb. They sent their last email for us in February of 2019, and so you can see the number of subscribers that, for that last email versus where we are now. So it's up a good amount, which we're really happy about. And then the open rate for that last email that they sent for us has doubled now into more of a typical range. That's a pretty typical open range. And the click rate has almost tripled, which is also really exciting, and a typical click rate is about 14%. So we're way above the average there. We've got a really good social media guy that we work with, and he's good at picking out the things that he knows people want to hear about. So, so that's the specific statistic that I can mention to you. But I'll just say informally again about, my slide turned out all skewed on here, so sorry, some of the words are blocked. We've found a really good marketing strategy to be, when we have something exciting coming up in Richfield, to do sort of a long-form art article, kind of an interview with the pertinent folks, put that on our website, and then do a big social media push to our website to draw people's attention to that. And that's been really successful for us. So two recent examples were the opening of Dessertopia in May. So exciting, I'm sure a lot of you saw, you know, the real interest, huge interest in the community. So it's so exciting to see posts like this go viral and to support Ebony and her business. And we plan to do this again now that she's expanded to, you know, to have a larger shop. And so that's really exciting news for us, too. But to get shared 53 times is a pretty big deal for us. And then another post similar to that was the adventure park opening, featuring Maria right there. And it did even better for us. You can see it was shared 109 times. So that was just a super exciting thing, and there was an interview. So in that case, we did an interview with Amy, Amy Markle, and put that on our website, and it really drew good attention to our website and helps people keep finding Visit Richfield. We also, in a more, even more concrete way, we also sponsored the opening, and that's another typical activity for Visit Richfield. We have typically sponsored Unity in the Community, Penfest, Urban Wildland, Red, White, and Blue Days, of course, in better days and better times. And so going forward, with the new grants program that's being proposed, you know, we want to, of course, continue to do that in a more directed and purposeful way, to continue to support Richfield events and hotels and restaurants, as we've been doing. So, let's see, is there anything else I wanted to make sure that I mentioned? I think that's mainly it. As a Richfield resident myself, I work for Visit Richfield, but I also live here, and it's just really, it's exciting to me to see cool new things happening in the community, and then be able to tell people about them and help everyone discover Richfield. I see it as kind of a synergy, you know? We all are working toward the same goal, and if people, you know, a lot of this kind of marketing is directed, we also market our hotels to the larger, you know, Outstatement, Isotta, and the five-state area, but this kind of marketing is directed more toward the greater Twin Cities metro. And when, I, I see it as a synergy in that when people want to come to Richfield and see cool things happening here, then they think of Richfield as a cool place to live, and if they want to live here, then that benefits the schools, and it's all of a piece together, so. So that's, I think, what I wanted to say. Thank you so much for having us. Thanks so much, Director Epler. I have enjoyed participating in the meetings and hearing about all the exciting things that the Visit Richfield's been doing, and I did notice that in the presentation, all of my slides are pretty boring and businesslike, and Katie's slides were much more fun, so they've got marketing down. So back to the boring. Our research, we've done quite a bit, and there were definitely themes in that research, and I've highlighted some of these things. These are our key takeaways that we hope to, or plan to incorporate into a new agreement. And these are some of the more, more details on it. We, consistent with best practices, we plan to have a regular review period. We don't want to wait another 30 years to update it. We also plan to incorporate a clear scope of services and detail a reporting process, so that the RTPB is reporting back to the, to the council, including their results and financial results. We also want to expand the RTPB board to include my position and a restaurant representative. This is also consistent with best practices and having a more diverse board. Having the city manager on it, it would be ex officio, so it would be the city manager or their designee. The citizen and restaurant members, they would be appointed by the city. The Richfield Chamber appoints one member, and then the RTPB appoints three hotel reps. We would also, we would incorporate that board structure and recruitment and appointment process in the agreement. Right now, it's all governed in the bylaws. And so this is the current board makeup, and this is the board that we're proposing. I think it has been helpful. We have one citizen rep right now, and it's Lisa Rudolph, and she also chairs the Community Services Commission. And that has been helpful, because she's very knowledgeable about a lot of the events, like the Urban Wildlands Half Marathon, many of them major tournaments at the ice arena. And that, like Director Epler said, there's synergy with those big events, bringing people from outside the city so that they can go to our restaurants and rent our hotel rooms. We also plan to put into the agreement to phase out that direct reimbursement for individual hotel marketing expenses. I think it should be gradual. The hospitality industry has definitely been hard-hit recently. And then establish a competitive grant program. This is consistent with that research and a recommendation from the Minnesota Association of Convention and Visitors Bureaus, MACBB. And the grant program would be probably quarterly, that's what we've been discussing, and it would be open to businesses, nonprofits, and the city. So next steps, we would continue to work with Attorney Techen and RTPB and update the agreement, and we would hope to bring it back to you in the first quarter of 2022. And then I'm going to turn it over to President Vasicke.
Well, I just want to express gratitude for, you know, Katie Rodriguez's help, and Katie Epler, and the good work of Neil Ruland and the other folks on staff to really help drive pro-community and positive messaging out to bring people into the community, to really let people realize some of the, some of the assets we have. I didn't hear the echo, so I knew that. So really, just to give people visibility to the assets that we have in our community, try and drive traffic to the restaurants and local businesses, try and encourage more stays in local hotels, so we bring in more property tag, or, I'm sorry, more occupancy tax revenue, and just continue to keep that flywheel of positivity moving. And, you know, I think, you know, the framework that Katie has outlined, Rodriguez, not Epler, I think really sets us up to be in a good position to, you know, fully document this, and then also, at the same time, you know, bring the current bylaw structure into align with some best practices. So that's all I've got.
City Manager Rodriguez, do we move to questions now from the council? Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I was just curious, for the city-appointed members, would we use our same board and commission process? Would it also be three-year terms, or how would we do those?
Yes, three years' terms and staggered, and it would be, it would be using our annual process.
Okay, and the, and we, so we have one citizen, one restaurant, is from the city?
We would, right now, we have, there is one citizen representative, and we would expand to have the restaurant representative.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sipple.
As a follow-up to that, can the citizen member be somebody that's on a commission, like currently is happening with Commissioner Rudolph? It's not going to be like commissions where you can only be on one?
We haven't gotten to that detail yet. But I, I do think it has been helpful to have someone that is familiar with those events that we're, that we're putting on as a city that bring people from the outside, so it's something that we can work with Attorney Techen on.
Other questions or comments from councilmembers? I had one question. Could you explain the grant program? So businesses in Richfield would apply to get free promotion, is that the grant program, or could you explain that a little bit?
So the way it works right now, the way it's been working to date is we have, as Executive Director Epler mentioned, we have two different really focuses. One is the local community focus, so funding things like the, that promote community vibrancy. Urban Wildlands brings in people from out of town. Red, White, and Blue Days brings in people from out of town. But there are other things like Historical Society events that may not, that really draw from the local population, and not so much anybody who's going to stay in a hotel. So we've supported those community vibrancy activities on kind of an ad hoc basis. So when the Spartan Foundation is running a golf tournament, they fill out a one-page grant request, and then we've been reviewing those on a monthly basis. The other pool that we've been doing is the one that City Manager Rodriguez mentioned, which is the, the hotel-directed expenses. And that's if, if a hotel sees value in placing an ad in Minnesota Public Radio's magazine that's going to have a broader reach, they can contract for that and then bring it to the board, the tourism board, and ask for that expense to be paid on their behalf. So those are really the two ways we spend money. This is looking at consolidating that into a more formalized grant program. We, you know, I have some, some pretty significant confidence based on the guidance that was provided by the Minnesota Convention and Visitors Bureau, that the business side of this will take care of itself. Restaurants who want to run a particular promotion in a, you know, in conjunction with Red, White, and Blue Days, or the support of the swimming pool, we've previously covered the cost of the backpacks for season pass holders and other activities that sort of border on community vibrancy and tourism. The business side and the backpack side is going to take care of itself. I do have a little bit of concern that we haven't necessarily trained local nonprofits to get in front of some of their requests. So, you know, Urban Wildlands is going to be way out there asking for dollars ahead of time. I don't know, you know, that the Spartan Foundation is going to be thinking that a quarter ahead of time, they have to submit. So we're going to end up working through some of the logistics of it, but the goal would be to have one consolidated program to fund these initiatives for either cooperative marketing opportunities between hotels and restaurants, if a hotel has a, or one of the properties in the community has a comprehensive marketing, comprehensive marketing plan that they want to bring forward in advance, or if we have a local community group, they would be participating through that grant program.
Got it. Thank you so much for that. Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to express so much appreciation for everybody here. I think the pivot that the organization has made missionally and activity-wise is pretty profound and really well-received. I don't think four years ago, we'd ever thought of 109 shares on anything in terms of what was happening, and that's really, really fruitful, too. In terms of the process, in terms of the, the board composition, that seems like a really good mix, and I think close to, to what had been contemplated in years past, too. I think it's a really good place to, to land. So I think, I think all that's just excellent, I'm really grateful. The one, the one piece, and the other, the other piece that I wanted to highlight, I was glad to hear that it'll be a slow phase-out of the, of the, the monies in the current practice, and I would even support, you know, pausing that into next summer or seeing where we land in the pandemic, just so we don't, we recognize that these, these are tax dollars that come from, from hotels, and we don't want to put an undue burden on them, certainly in the midst of a pandemic. And so I just wanted to share that also. But in that, in that similar vein, I know years previously, one of the, one of the things that was most concerning is sort of repeated use of the language, like this is our money. And, and so, and I think we've moved beyond that, but when it comes to appointing and confirming the board, it would seem really useful and a good check that, I think, how it works right now, where the chamber recommends a board appointee, but that the council would ultimately approve and say, yeah, we would, we would affirm that also, that that would be good. And then, and then also the, my question was for the hotels. Hopefully, there'll be more than three hotels at some point. I think we've also talked about taxing Airbnbs and bringing them into the fold, and so I was curious, does anybody have any clarity about how the hotels will appoint the three representatives?
Go ahead, City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the first question for the, on the hotels, there's three hotel positions, and it would be up to the RTPB to seat those folks. And so, yeah, conceivably, it could be an Airbnb person at some point. Right now, it's, we have three hotels, so it's three representatives from the hotels. It has been administratively difficult with the current process of having the council approve those, because they are doing it similar to me as, as an ex officio. They're doing it as part of their jobs, and so when they move on, there's an opening, and right now, it's clunky to bring that to the council, plus there's no vetting process for the council.
Just to be clear, I wasn't talking about the hotel, I was talking about the commerce.
Yep, yep, getting to that one. And, but I wanted to clarify that it's three positions. It's not, it's not per hotel, it's just three positions on the board that we're recommending. Also, it is consistent with MACBB, their best practices, that council, actually, they recommend that council not approve any of the positions except for city-appointed positions. So it is consistent with best practices that they not approve the chamber position. And I did present this to the chamber, and they were in agreement with that as well. So right now, the positions that the council would approve, I mean, there's the city manager position, and again, that's ex officio, but then there would be just the two. It would be the citizen representative, and then someone to represent the restaurants. And I don't know if you have anything else to add.
Well, in conjunction with that, the other piece that sort of fits in with the MACBB advice or the MACBB best practices is just some feedback we've gotten from the auditor, because, you know, as you guys all know, we do annual audits and submit the results of those audits to the city council for review and approval. It is, there's some risk to nonprofit status and independence when you have another organization driving board composition. So it, the, ultimately, the way that it'll get achieved is, we'll build into the agreement, as City Manager Rodriguez said, we'll build into the agreement what the board makeup is going to be, but it'll be the, the Tourism Bureau itself seating those directors, and ultimately, you know, controlling. ultimately, you know, continuing to maintain the insurance that protects the city from, you know, a taxpayer and, and tax perspective, ensuring that we're safeguarding the public funds.
Councilmember Supple.
First of all, I was really happy that you looked at what the best practices were, so thank you to all the people that did all the research and all that part. And I was really pleased to see the restaurant position added because I think that's a big thing here in Richfield, there's a lot of unique restaurants and if we can build off of that, that would be great.
Councilmember Rowland.
Thank you, Mayor. A few comments, I don't think any, any questions. I think overall this is moving us in the right direction, I really appreciate it. I have less of a, a history to know how much it's a shift, but just will share that I really appreciate this focus on, as you described, the, like the events that draw in people from the broader metro, I think that that is an area that we really shine at and don't always promote. And I think the key connections there that make it, make a lot of sense to have the new positions we're talking about are restaurants, as Councilmember Supple just stated, and then like our recreation activities, our parks and events and things. And so I think that makes a lot of sense. I, maybe I do have one question. I do like that the current community representative, the connection you've mentioned that Lisa is so connected with community services and the parks programming. Could we, I mean, we, the people in this room, for as long as we're part of the process, can encourage that to be someone who is connected with like parks or local events or something? Would that be appropriate or is that too restrictive to write into the agreement that the community representative would like be connected to local events or local amenities or, we can make it broad language, but would that be appropriate to encourage in agreement?
Councilmember Rowland, I can give my take on that just from an appointment perspective. I mean, you have a lot of discretion in that appointment and I think the, maybe if you have wishes about the background for that person, that can be part of the recruitment process too. I don't know that it would be written into the agreement because that's between the city and the RTPB, but that could be part of your recruitment process and, and stating your sort of desired qualifications for somebody who might fill that spot.
Okay, thank you. I'm comfortable with that. The last thing, two other things I really appreciate. One, the, like setting clear goals and having it be a more collaborative relationship with the council, I really appreciate that I think there's ways we can, I mean, we were just talking with Trash of like, how can we even just like share what's already being posted to have more of a partnership between RTPB and the council for something as basic as that, but also for as exciting as like, what are the big things coming up? What do we want to be promoting? And then the last thing, I think the, the funding changes make a lot of sense and I worked at a church where there was a foundation that had a similar sort of as-needed like system, you could come and request funding for various projects and was there while they switched to like a specific, like grants are due at this time and we'll consider them this date. And I, I think it helped a lot because that's so much easier to publicize and did not just evolve into like the people who know about it, like tell their friends who then get their projects supported. So I think it makes a lot of sense and I'm excited to, again, that'd be a really great thing for us to partner on promoting, like, hey, the grant period is open and do this date, so just would hope that you all can keep us in the loop whenever that's kicking off. But thank you again to everyone who's done the research on this and looked into it, I think we're heading a good direction.
Other questions from council members? I'd just like to thank Katie for your role, thank you so much for the work that you've been doing. I love seeing, I like the shift in kind of the longer form highlighting of what's going on in the community. I mean, that's what makes Richfield so unique, it is that urban hometown, it is more personal and people do want to hear the stories of the new businesses and the families that they're impacting and what they're, you know, why they're doing what they're doing, so it's great to see that, but thank you for your leadership in that. And thank you as well, Gordon, for the work that you're doing in moving this forward. This is, I'm, I'm really happy with the suggested next steps, it seems like a win-win and a great way to move forward together. Any other comments or questions from anyone? No? All right, so then can I, oh, do you want to just talk about, just, I'll do a brief recap of what's next, I guess you already did it, but just.
I think we got pretty, yes, thank you, Mayor. I think we got pretty clear direction, so we will, we'll start hammering out an agreement and bring it back to you for your consideration in the first quarter of 2022.
Great.
Yeah. We have lots of time before the meeting.
Thank you. Well, I will adjourn our work session. Thank you, everyone.